He called you by that same time?
I got the email at nine forty Friday. You guys and have over the weekend, that was my goal so that you have the benefit of the weekend, the jettison.
Yeah. So I thanked him, I thanked him for going in and. Where are we?
You know, after hours. Cause otherwise he was doing it on Friday. I don't know, it's done. Huh? No, he knows, he knows. I had a VRF meeting with him this morning and he signed warrants earlier, so just wanna. Make sure that he knows it's not six. Hello, are you gonna be joining us?
What do you mean?
For the meeting tonight?
Five thirty? I thought it was six.
Nope, five thirty.
On my way.
Okay, bye.
What do you mean hello?
Yeah, you're kidding me.
If you was at the lake, it'd be a little longer.
Mustn't be at the lake in the water.
You're sliding out?
Yes.
You got it?
Yeah.
I got it, uh, the piece doesn't know where it is. I don't have the rear bumper though. They're not gonna be able to pull me around on a plastic slip.
There's a bumper there, but if you want the hitch built in, you have to order another bumper. And I didn't know, well, he told me after, I said, well, the other slide next to it has it. Yeah, he ordered it with the spring and you can do that at the factory level is when you do that, you're shipping with the slip. He didn't tell me that, well, you didn't ask, that's true, I didn't ask, accessory or later on.
But this guy must have ordered it before, he said, I want the hitch.
So they send it with the slip.
It's the same price though. I think it is.
Yeah. Okay, I'll wait, but I'm gonna have the electronic security system.
Yeah.
That's a different chip. When did I come in? He said sometime between now and.
So what's in the car?
Next year, next year, never been known.
Can't ride before.
Hopefully we're still so close together as before.
Well, he had called me, I think it was the first, and he said, your cover is in, so I walked in and said, what am I doing with a cover, putting it along? He said, no, you're setting it together at least. Oh, really? Did you get expedition SUV? I shouldn't have gone in because now I went in and saw the other one, I saw you had those lights on, I was like, oh, right? How much are those four hundred something like that, I forgot that one, I guess.
The SUV is the super expensive.
No, 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 special edition, no, it stands. This, the turbo is open in the front, this is cool, this is mine, did you have white skins I had?
Open like that?
Yeah. Really? And these lights, I had two for mine. Yeah, it's open, I had a guy here and I had them on. He had a car, he, a turbo, he treated it in, he had a nice machine, no. Maybe a trigger pan?
Yeah, always.
Would you put all the lights on?
I don't get that way for design, I got that sucky right.
Yeah, it's why the screeley, they like the very cool that. They're all liquid, but the turbo needs a lot of heat. Oh, really? Oh, yeah, the air and everything else, I had the skid plate, massive felt skid. I know, it's like a skid, last year it had like three bars and then like it grew and to get more air. Oh, it's obvious, I mean. Hey, you're not late.
Uh, I suppose.
So, so we were, so we were debating for about twenty minutes whether to call you, so we'll wait till the very end, so he has some.
Sorry, guys. America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation, I'm ever alive, we give this little plea to the ancestors for all.
Perform certain participations. And then going in. Article one, consider other business and adjustments to the agenda, are there any adjustments to the agenda, Gary? So there are no adjustments other than you have in your pack, some extra information for your current package. One is for the OSHA mandate, one is from the solar, and then one that starts with an E, you know, and that goes with the tax commitment stuff. You also have the, one thing which would be considered other business that came in, it's a training for, for NIM's National Incident Management System. That's coming up for officials, so I'll be on that, and if you wanted to have, if somebody wanted to get in on that. It's gonna be a Zoom, it will be provided after registration is complete, if you wanna add that to the agenda, yeah, it would be the one thing. Are there any discussion on adding that to the agenda, there's one, it's a virtual train? Yep. So it'll become Article ten, you have consensus?
Eleven.
Uh, bless the article, yes. Yep, so by consensus, we're gonna add this article?
Yeah.
Okay. We want Article two is to consider the board meetings minutes on October twelve and nineteen. Both or just one?
Both.
Both?
All of them.
There's a second, is there any discussion, are there any corrections or additions in the minutes? Hearing none, are those in favor of the motion, are those against, motion carries. Article three is to consider treasurer's warrants. Right on table right there, it all been coming. Yeah, motion to accept, motion by Jason.
I second.
You have that. Motion by Doug, second one by Jason to approve the treasurer's warrants. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, are those in favor of the motion, against, motion carries. Article four, to consider the amended and final solar supply contract proposal from NG, Nanawaska Solar LLC, Novell Energy Solutions and Nordic Solar Power LLC. So I've given you what are the final offers, I guess, I'll summarize those by saying that. Right now, you have two solar, these are businesses that will be in Nanawaska, one for sure, which is NG. They are already permitted, they're seen David, they've already got the road installed, and that one's coming online next summer. And you have one proposed, one by Caribou Solar. If you subscribe with them, not necessarily would be tapped into this, it would be somewhere, they have multiple sites in Orissa County. One that you'll see the most is right across from Caribou Motoring, across the access highway. Right there. Both of them have amended their offers, actually. NG has, offer has always been consistent that they wanted to pay property taxes or fees and lieu taxes. They are providing ten thousand dollar donation to a nonprofit, which is a beautiful thing to make, I've already made that pledge. Caribou Solar came in, they're making a ten thousand dollar, one-time donation to a nonprofit of their choosing. They also pledged to pay the town lieu taxes, two thousand dollars per minute watt hour, just like NG did. So remember, Caribou Solar was here, Shawan was here and said they weren't going to, but they changed their mind. And then you have Novel, which is in Frenchville, so they obviously won't pay tax, they gave you an amended proposal with the Lex built in. Uh, but obviously they can't offer community lieu tax, cause there's another new tax there in Nanawaska. Uh, that's the thirty thousand quid view of the proposals, you guys can, you've had a chance to look through them and. The place that. Talk about it. I guess I can say something if anybody else wants to start. Okay, so I did take a look at, at all of them, I kind of made my own chart, I did, I put all the, I guess, the version, you know, everything together to figure out what one has, what the other one has. They're all pretty much close together, they're all pretty much on par, they all pretty much offer the same thing. But I got a lot more comfortable feeling from the Caribou Solar project about how strict the contract was. And kind of how much motion we had within that contract, and I just feel a little bit more comfortable with a large contract like that. With kind of how they approached it and how, how their contract is. That's just a personal. I, I will add, add information too, that right now, Caribou Solar, they have met with the planning board. Because the property that they buy is on Gideon Street, medium density residential, so not technically permissible use of that land, solar, under the, under the. And so. I think the planning board has met with them once for like a pre-meeting, kind of talked about it, and they're gonna continue that discussion. I think Caribou Solar indicated that they are unable to build one there, they're gonna build one somewhere in Nanawaska. But I'm just, I just want you to know that, right now. In order, my interpretation is that in order for them to build on what is a lot behind Paramount, more or less, on offer Deion. It's land formerly owned by Bill Wolf, the Woodhead Ozarks, I believe, medium density residential, but it's wooded. And it's not far from the town line, and whether or not they can make an exception, there's nothing in the Land Use Code that allows for an exception there, in that regard. And to modify the medium density residential zone to offer solar would mean that you would open it up to a lot of places in town. I think the discussion there, the possibility there, would be to rezone that area. Potentially, I think that would be the most prudent, reasonable, in my opinion, the most reasonable thing to do there. It's another discussion, but just know that, you know, this proposal by Caribou Solar is based on either them being there or someone else. Right, cause they, they did say that even if they don't build one in Nanawaska, they build one somewhere else, that we could be on that, whatever next project they build would be here. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a Nanawaska project, it'd be great, you know. If they don't build here, they're not paying, they're not paying, they're not paying. No, and I understand that, but either way, like the other company, Novell, they're building their plant whether we join in with them or not. You know what I mean, so I, I don't want us to base our, our sole idea on just, you know, like where, when, or how, but the fact that. What's the best cost effective for the, for the community, and also what's the most comfortable contract? We're signing a contract that's gonna extend past the life of some people here on the board, so we wanna make sure we make it easy for. I don't know, I think, I was thinking we were looking at five years though. Right, which is, again, still past the life of some of the people on the board, so I wanna make sure any decision that I made today. You know what I mean, I'm not sticking somebody with a bad decision anyhow.
Why did they pick that location, why was that location that taught for them, I mean, I don't, I don't know, it, I thought it'd be.
I don't, I don't know, it would be an assumption on that one. Present available land, direction of site. Proximity of power. Right. Regardless, I still feel quite strongly about, and I'd like to hear it, the other.
Well, for sure, I like the idea that, that NG's project has already started, they're already committed to being here, they're already committing themselves to taxes, they're already gonna give us. Some money down, so it's, it's a consideration that, that bears strongly with me.
I have to agree, I can tell you when we first met, I was really trying to lean towards the Caribou project. And then when we met that second time with them, we got some more explanation, more information. I went kind of back where the NG was, and I just feel like the Caribou project, although I have no qualms that it would be a viable project. I just think we would be accepting something that's going to be an extended period before we ever see anything actually put into use for them. That project hasn't been begun, so the other one's already going, we know we're gonna be, or the proposal was to be online by next, late next fall. Right, and they're offering, they're offering ten thousand upfront, they're offering, you know. I just feel like they have more meat behind them, I don't know, I'm leaning towards the NG myself, that's why I, I'm comfortable with it.
I like NG also, cause I thought they had the resources, if something happens, they have, they can be back up and running again. They're a big company and they, they have this in other places around the world. So I thought if there's a storm that comes on, damages, you know, they don't have to wait for any insurance settlement, they can start rebuilding back online.
I know they committed to use the whole contract of wherever possible.
And they are now, that's right.
They are right now, so to me, I, you know.
I'd say that.
And I'm not saying that the other one wouldn't, but I just feel like in place we know is happening.
One of the partners is a contractor. And Gary. I, I, I think any of these companies, I think any of these companies are good offers. I think that Novel, not even the tax payer in the community, the others are offering to pay taxes, even if, even if they, you know, even if Caribou Solar and NG. Weren't offering the taxes, we still get the benefit of the reimbursement, the partial fifty percent reimbursement from this data name under that program. Right. We're not gonna realize that from Novel, as they're building in Frenchville, which, and I think they're good companies. You know, they're, they'll be good for their.
There's a habit that I've put on the other two that we would deal with, it's similar to that, I know.
I feel the same, I think Novel, can you put us on, that's my opinion. You know?
Well, the first time the presentation, I always, I thought they were organized, and what they were talking about. Caribou, it started in that, they didn't show up for the first presentation, so they kind of lost the book.
And to their credit though, I will say to their credit, at fifty, you know, we're just coming on. Around the time that we had already started, we had been into the discussion for a while.
But I just thought they weren't organized, and to me, they need to be organized, and they need to look like they're solid, and they're selling their stuff. And that sales pitch implied that, but NG I thought was really grounded.
But he was the first one to bring out the energy credits though.
He was, he did flush out some.
He was the first one that said, oh, well, the energy credits, and everybody else seemed to be silent on it. So I liked their open disc that they had. That, that was a plus.
I mean, they're local on top of that too, you know.
That's a consideration, you know, question.
Those are the two at this point that I consider.
I mean, they're offering the same, but any twenty percent. Have we figured out what we were looking at for committing, eighty-five percent to the town? Yeah, I've been over, I've based them on eighty-five percent subscription, so we're working it. Right. Better to lead a little bit. Yeah. Real motion? I can't leave them already yet. Jason, you. Talk to us. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty committed to the Caribou one in the sense that, again, it is local, you know, you mentioned something about, well, they're not gonna have to wait until a certain claim, they'll go away. When it comes to projects like these, it's kind of self-reliant on itself, if something happens to the solar panels. They're not just gonna pump money out of their own pocket to fix it, the money that they use to fix it is coming out of the money that they're paying, the credit set they're gonna be giving us. So we're, we're the ones who are paying for that repair, you know, whatever's not covered in them. I feel having the Caribou one where they're local, they're closer, it feels a lot closer to home than this huge company overseas that, to watch, it's just another number on their chart, you know? And I've seen that before with, with businesses where, you know, outside out of mind type thing, and I get that mentality where the Caribou one. Yeah, he might have seemed like he wasn't as prepared, but I feel that they're, they're closer to home, you know, you need to have more of a heart in it, and it felt like. There, there was a lot of more openness coming from, from them, you know? I just feel a lot more comfortable with a local company like that. And, and I'm putting aside the fact that, you know, they're, who's paying taxes and how much, cause they're all doing the same thing, and regardless of who we choose. Those projects are coming in, or at least they're attempting to come in, regardless of who we choose, even if we choose the one that's in Frenchville, the other two companies are still coming to Nanawaska. Totally agree with the fact that they're off my list as well, just for, for a lot of the reasons, but, so I'm basing my decision less on what they're offering, because those are just extras. I'm, I'm looking at more what's, you know, what I feel is best for the community, and where I think we'll get better support and better response from.
Better support, you think?
I, I definitely think so, because they're closer here, they're closer to the contractors, you know what I mean? This other company, yeah, they're using local contractors, but they're kind of disconnected from, from us up here, you know?
At least a major shareholder would be, would Caribou would see them.
They, they are though, but, but all of these companies are gonna have multiple sites in this. Yeah, no, and I.
I believe NG already deals with some portions of them, they not only have their own sites, they manage something somewhere.
Yeah, they have, they have other sites that they're developing.
Right, there's other ones coming online, so, you know. My only hesitation with the Caribou one is pointing, it's kind of back there, we don't know when it will be online. Ultimately, I know that that's an issue up there, and whether that drags us out about a year or two years, we're looking at accepting or saying, well, we'll take onto this contract. And to realize the savings in five years from now, when things could be a lot different from they are today.
But, but, but they did say they wouldn't necessarily be subscribed to this one, we could get subscribed to the one. We would get the energy credits and all that, but we probably would not get the taxes.
Correct.
That may be a year or two down the road. Yeah. If, at all, if, yeah. Oh, he seems committed to.
I think they're committed to it.
I mean, he seemed very honest and open.
He did, he did give us information about the others.
Yeah, that they were hiding behind it, seemed like the business he came on, he was very open. Yeah, and, and you can tell just by looking at some of the gestures, you can tell a lot by how somebody gestures and how they speak. With the other company, it's like you ask one of the question, they kind of eye themselves to the other person, like, okay, well, you answer a lot with him, he's, I mean, right away it came out, and here it is. You do with it what you want, here, here's the information, I felt a lot more comfortable talking with him than, than this other company.
Well, just based on, on, on probably the size of these companies, I mean, you can tell that, that they needed two or three people to answer different portions or different questions that were being asked, where he answered all of them.
He answered the whole project. I, I do agree that he quickly would pick up and respond to a question, even whether it was directed at him or not at the time, however he would answer that. Pretty openly about Caribou.
But, but at the same time, like, Novel, Connor was here, he was the last speaking, he kind of joked about things like.
Yeah, they did all work.
He did all the answering to the questions, cause he was the first in line.
Yeah, that's a true story.
I mean, if, if Novel was right here in the middle of Nanawaska with the others, I mean, he did a pretty good presentation too, and he was, I mean, I have the same feeling with him too, it's like one-on-one. Well, kind of, you know, I wanna try to stay local as much as I can, if I can go with somebody who's planning on coming to Nanawaska. Whether they make it here or not, their plan is to come here, you know.
Is there a question all, at all of sustainability, I mean, some of these companies here are pretty, pretty widespread already, where this company that we're considering here is fairly good.
It, it is, but if you look at it in, in a sense of, of this, if you've got this huge company, who's got farms all over the place, and, and they're making, you know, they're gonna set up a farm, they're gonna milk it for what it's worth. And then, once it's done, and we've seen this before, you look it up on the internet, you can see where farms have just been left there, and, and that's it, okay? While if you have a smaller company like Caribou, who's more dedicated and, and seems more personable, they're gonna try to reuse that equipment, they're gonna extend the life of that equipment. Because to them, they're a much smaller company, and that equipment needs a lot more to them, than a big company who's just got a site out in the corner.
I did ask something directly about decommission, when it was on the first meeting we had, and they have a decommission plan that they use. And they always try to get it to go back online, sell it to somebody else, and if not, they decommission and place it back to its original state. And everything's on main and minus drain pile or anything, maybe underground. I did ask that question, cause that was one of my first concerns, was okay, in twenty years, you're just gonna pack up and shut it down and leave a bunch of solar powered panels laying around here, like, what's gonna happen with that? But they're on leased land, so, you know.
NG was.
NG, yeah.
Yeah. Caribou.
That's why I was curious.
Caribou looking to buy, right?
Caribou's looking to buy. Ultimately, I find them very similar.
Yeah.
They really are.
Yeah.
And my only hesitation on the Caribou is, when is it gonna be online? We agree to this today, if they run into pickups, where else are they gonna go? And then, if there's any issues, find an alternate location, or that alternation is in Nanawaska, and now we have NG sitting over here that offered, you know, the same package and was able to commit right away. And maybe we lose out on the pilot, you know, the payment, the lieu of the taxes, but. It's, that's the only draw, I mean, it's right there.
It's viable, but. Did they say that if you don't choose them, they're not gonna pay taxes, or they're paying taxes regardless? Who, NG? Yeah. They're paying taxes. Okay, so they're paying taxes, or either way, now, I mean, if we say, let's just throw it out there and say, we're gonna choose Caribou, we're gonna put a stipulation on it, if they're not up and running within two years, I'm just throwing a number out there. Then we, you know, we employ the contract, we can put that into that. Well, we will realize that you gain benefits by not getting. Also, and I understand, and then at that point. But, I mean, they're, they're, they're trying, and they, he said it himself, if that farm doesn't, doesn't happen, they've got other farms that are coming online as well. I don't force ESPN years without seeing that, or anything.
You know, a local company too, I mean. Most of the folks that probably own this company have other interests in the area, and you know very well that any issues that we're facing, they would, they would, they would be right here to help us, you know, it's, it's different when it's local.
They hear, they hear our bark a lot louder than.
You bet. You know, I, I, I think the more and more we're talking about this, the more and more I'm thinking, cause I really was looking at staying with Andy here, but, but I think. The discussion here tonight, I think I'm gonna change my mind.
The other benefit to the Caribou project is you correct that all those involved in that project, the investors in that project, all own viable businesses, which, when it tarnished so their name perfectly serves them.
And they've got ties into this community in different ways.
Not that I would suspect that there would be something, but if something were to happen.
And I kind of get the feeling already that if something were to happen, maybe right there.
Probably.
You know what I mean, I get, I get that feeling from them, and it's not to say that the other company won't do the same, I mean, I can't. You know, I mean, I, I don't know enough history about this other company to say that's what they've been doing in the past, so don't get me wrong. The other company could be just as good, just as reliable, just as quick to respond.
What are your thoughts, Gary, on?
I can leave you away, I like, you know, NG was always, right out of the gate, had the best offer.
Yeah.
Right? And.
The longer committed, yeah.
The longer committed, right, they were willing to get off of that. Caribou Solar, they weren't gonna pay property taxes, he said it right here, cause he was exempt.
Right.
You know, and I think that, you know, they figured out that there were other, that their competitors were throwing other things into the mix. You know, and that, that, without actually telling each one, well, this one's giving us this, and they didn't go down that road.
We forced them.
We, we, we worked with them, make sure they put their best offer forward, and they've all stepped up and gave us a better offer, you know? And so you have what are basically, I think.
Very similar.
Similar offers, and, and the decision is gonna hinge on, you know. Local, local versus.
Yeah.
International, and, and who's gonna provide the best, the best service.
Do you, Caribou one also is a.
I don't think you can go wrong with either.
It's a five-year with an automatic renewal, correct, on the Caribou?
Yeah, we have to let them know.
Yeah, we have to let them know that we're gonna lock out. And 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 they have to find a subscriber.
To replace us.
To replace.
Replace us. But that could delay things too, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make the motion if we're ready for a motion, I mean, I'll make the motion to uh, propose going with the Caribou Solar project with the five year contract as written by the contract that had been reviewed by the work.
Oh, second that. You got a motion, you have second? Are there any conditions to this motion?
I think the only condition, and that's what we can discuss or discussion part of it, what do you think about that early termination or if they don't get a project online for us? I don't I don't know if we want to necessarily say if they don't get the Madawaska project, but if they don't get us on a project by, I don't know, a year or a half, what do you?
I'd hate to withdraw off it and and lose in the fact that we may lose out on the any other opportunity that may not ever come up looking the same at that point. If this goes a year and a half, two years before they're online and we have to sign, you know, we agree that in two years online, in two years and a month, or even if it's three years, I don't know, I feel like we're gonna give up something that we have on the plate right now. So I would hate to void the contract over inability to to put it online.
I I would just say that. I don't know, the the motion is out there, but. This is for your consideration.
I didn't add that to the motion.
Right. But this is for your, this is for your consideration as you're thinking about this, is that, you know, the rule taxes. And that means that they're both in town, but you want to make sure that your offer, your, it's conditional upon them actually being here in town, because if they're not a taxpayer in town, then does that change your mind?
Not necessarily, and I and I'll explain why. Because regardless of who we choose, okay, these two companies are trying to come in and this other project doesn't, sorry, not Engi, yeah, NG. And this other project doesn't work out, then we still lose that taxpayer regardless of who we chose.
What do you mean, no, it didn't work out?
The Madawaska site didn't work out for, like I'm saying, if we go to, if we decide tonight, we go with NG, that's our choice. And the Caribou Solar doesn't get their project in Madawaska. Well, regardless of who we chose, we still lose those taxes coming in, you know what I mean? They're, they both pledged to pay taxes if they come into the town.
Well, NG's already. NG's already here.
I understand that, what I'm just saying, regardless of who we choose, both companies are are gonna pay taxes.
Yeah, well, and my understanding is NG will start paying next year the taxes.
Right, yeah, and what I'm saying is you want to make sure that Caribou Solar is going to build because they're gonna do, they're putting their best offer forward that they've owned at Madawaska.
They still being.
But if they don't build, if they subscribe us to their farm in Caribou, and ultimately decide that they can't build in Madawaska, then that.
I completely understand that.
Then all of a sudden, you don't have the same offer anymore.
I I completely understand that, but what I'm trying to say is at the end of the day, our decision between the two of them does not cause the town to lose any tax revenue because if we would have chose NG and they and that other Caribou project fails, we lose that tax income anyway, you know what I'm saying? Our choice of who to choose from is not gonna choose who pays taxes.
They're not here.
That's that's.
Yeah, I get it.
That's separate, you know what I mean?
I mean, I, you're looking at it from the county's side.
I'm looking at it from the county's side, I'm looking at what's best for the town, you know? I do understand it, it's better to choose somebody who's paying taxes to town, but at the same time, you know, we want, we need to choose who we feel more comfortable, you know?
Motion? Right now, there's no situation. Maybe instead of we stick with a hard cut and say, with the ability to review in two years.
Well, no, we could have it, before we signed that contract, they committed that they were built in Madawaska.
Yeah, right, yeah, but but I didn't, I don't want to muddy up the waters here, but, you know, they have a site that, they have a site that's got some.
Relations.
Some work.
Correct, that's what.
Some legal work that they need to accomplish in town as well. I mean, if if we decide, if they're saying that's where we want it and that's the only place we're gonna put it, I'm not saying that's what we're gonna say, but let's just start to stake a discussion that we're being positioned. Then, then it puts this forward in that situation where you gotta, we're gonna convince the planning board to move forward and and we have to say, oh, okay, is rezoning the right thing to that lot? That's a card out, it's zoning commercial. But that, everything around it is meeting the N C P residential, so at some point in time, either it was developed that way or it was carved out for specific purpose, right? I can see that happening, but the planning board's gonna have to be on board and so are the voters of the town. Because it's an order to show, yeah, to zone it.
And like I said, if it doesn't work out, they'll put us on a different project, so we're not losing out on them particularly, you know? I just, I just don't want to take that initiative where we're gonna rush into somebody who's ready now or to rush into this just because they're there now rather than wait for something that I feel is is a better structure, you know what I mean? That's, you know.
Well, it's like, it's like, I mean, these, these companies have to sell this farm prior to them. Get it online. Getting it online and so, you know, the consideration there is also, how strong are they being able to sell their power? You know, are they able to to may really make this project go forward? You know, where where some of the other companies are considering it, they're already there, you know, they're already, their farms are already full.
Yeah.
I mean, the win-win?
I'm still comfortable with the motion.
Any more discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion? Who's against, motion Gary?
Yeah, there.
Good job.
Oh, that was gonna take a lot longer.
We all did our moments.
Yeah, you know, so, they try, you know, I mean, they're still, still unknown, yeah.
Article five is considered a full line contract with rules and a consolidated meeting.
This is just for remaining fax lines. Carol worked with, uh, the gentleman that had consolidated, after we went through the exercise of eliminating a bunch of fax lines and moved other people over to uh, to internet base, uh, we still had some fax lines that needed to stay hardwired. Um, in that, Carol negotiated the rates with, in that agreement for that.
What's the estimated savings?
Uh, some of those, what you have in front of you, it's gonna cut it by fifty percent.
Fifty percent savings?
On on what you're not monthly there, but what we're looking at, the cut is gonna save by fifty percent. We're just looking to bring down that monthly rate, you know?
And this is the contract for how long?
Uh, three or five years, I think it's three years.
I thought it was three. Yeah, it's over a year period, so the consideration here is for actually eleven of them? Is that it? You have eleven fax lines?
We have eleven lines, regular lines, we got rid of most of the fax lines except for.
But I mean, this, what we're looking at tonight, what are we, what's what's the actual quantity of lines that we're looking for?
The different departments, the safety complex, fire department, the public works, everywhere. There's eleven lines, yeah.
Well, if it goes, if it goes from eleven to three.
Don't pay NG to the last, to the last pager with the actual signature, they have the wrong location on there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, by rates. And that, you know, I can, if you were on the board of, you know, the finance committee and the board had previous years, they kind of looked hard at how much we were spending on home and stuff and backs and and, you know.
Do we hear these need fax lines?
Yes, one of these is for uh, for the PD, has to be a hard line.
Right.
And the other one is, I'm trying to remember.
Probably was.
For a copy or here, we couldn't get rid of the fax line because of the copy, because we scanned and we had E passes, you mean, right?
No.
No?
And the copy here is on the, uh, on the net based one.
But the public works? Big state, huh?
Uh, I think the sewer, the, uh.
Oh, sewer.
Sewer.
We have a total head too.
Speed up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is. Actually, for the digital skating system, you know, it has to be.
Fax line?
Yeah. Well, we call it a fax line, it's a, it's a whole line.
Yeah.
Okay.
There are motions? Yeah, I'll make a motion with yourself, you have a second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Yes.
I think Gary. Article six to consider down two thousand, two thousand twenty-one to the tax commitment. Just for a big one here.
Okay, so we have additional information that I provided, uh, the first is an email confirming with the accessory office that, uh, work is done briefly. Um, second is, part of that would be variable rates. Other than the rates of other towns. Which I don't have in front of me at the moment, I will get that. And then you have, uh, also last year's audit, not this year's audit, not June twenty twenty-one, June twenty twenty, June twenty twenty-one is still being worked on. Uh, so we took our energy acquisition balance from last year, Carol, and and we came up with what we think is a, an estimate of our energy fund balance, it's an audited figure right now, uh, of two hundred and fourteen dollars roughly. Our fine balance policy of ninety days cash, which is about two point seven million dollars. So, you know, that pays the bills for the town and the school, you know, what we have to pay the school, uh, our local share. So that gives you an idea of where we are, uh, that might be what I sent to you.
You have an email?
You have email? Uh, we sent the different scenarios for.
You have those scenarios, you can pull up on the screen, press them, kind of look at all the options. I know, I did see the email, but I just.
Right, you know what I didn't do? I didn't print those out, they weren't part of the original agenda, right? Email them out separately, so I did pull those up. Did you see that? Could I, uh, actually? All right, so, a couple of things, uh, Carol kind of gave you a detail of how the homestead exemption is affected by the bill rate on the on the homeowner's side. In fact, it is packed that you have most recent stuff, I believe.
Yes.
Uh, I showed you what the effect on the bill rate is to the overlay to Betty and the homestead reimbursement, okay? Uh, and my email discusses into you, uh, what I feel is important, uh, number one, while you're considering choosing a bill rate, uh, you want to be mindful of that overlay is a primary mechanism for growing our energy fund into our target balance. You want to be mindful that we started, uh, last year with the emergency reserve, so while we would hit a hit on the bill, for instance, the mill in their assessment, we have a disaster on our hands, uh, we want to grow that emergency reserve so we can mitigate a financial blow to the town over some time, a year or two. Uh, kind of, I'll talk about that a little bit, uh, you know, Doug had, Doug asked me, what would you remember? What would be the amount of money that would be ideal to help us in that emergency? I said, well, they do pay roughly forty percent of our taxes, right? They, uh, most of our revenue comes from, you know, forty percent of it. Or they are a single, our largest taxpayer, under new breaks. Uh, we also generate a lot of Betty, uh, revenue. Or in some ways in the city of eight million dollars this year, not just associated with the mill, but a lot of that is associated with them. So what would be a good number to have in our emergency reserve? Well, you know, considering, you know, we we have a six million dollar budget roughly, six point one, six point two, and the schools, local shares, you know, um, we have that review somewhere here. Is about, um, three point seven million?
Yeah.
Are you?
Uh.
Are you ten?
Yeah.
It's a big number, I think, that we should work towards. And the statute that allows us to create that emergency reserve only allows us to put five percent of our budget, our budget, per year, whether we raise it in taxes or we take it from the energy fund and just transfer it, we can only do five percent of the time. So I think we did three hundred thousand last year, we could have done three thirty or three twenty or something like that, we just put it in even. It would take us ten years according to the statute to get the three million dollars. So, if we're gonna do that every year, you know, that's the goal. And and the circumstances are such that we can do that, right? Uh, without causing too much hardship on the on the taxpayers, uh, it would take us a while to get there. But the primary way for us to be able to fund that would be through the overlay. That's where we, we can grow the, we can grow the energy fund three ways, we can bring in more revenue than we budgeted. We can not spend all of our budgeted, uh, all the budget in respective departments. Or we have the overlay, the overlay is there for, uh, different reasons, it's here for errors in the tax commitment, if there's something that was missed, or something that was wrong and it was significant, we could go back on that overlay, that's the cushion, you know, and that mean revenue services allows that. So I'm always, you know, main revenue services always advocates for a, for a healthy overlay every year. Give yourself some cushion, uh, that you're not on fees and emails. Uh, and then, you know, if if I, with luck, if there are no issues there, that money goes into the, into the ready day fund, you know? Uh, goes out in the energy fund, not only for the purpose of the emergency reserve, but if ever we grow it enough, we want to make some significant purchases of equipment, we can do so without borrowing, we have that ability. And it allows us to cash flow better and we don't have to do, uh, taxi increment financing on occasion. We've never done any, we've never had to do any since I've been here, but the town has done those in the past.
You better read it.
Yeah, so, that's, you know, sort of where I'm at, um, in that regard. You know, I'm okay with anything in this range that I've highlighted to you. But right now, the mill rate, the, uh, main revenue services calculator tells us that we can have a maximum rate of twenty-two thirty. We are currently at twenty-two eighty-five and the minimum rate would be twenty-one twenty-four, which would give us no overlay, it would actually be negative by two hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, I think that anything in the highlighted range, uh, serves us well.
Actually, I was kind of looking at, and I did research what we did last year as well, and I was kind of looking at the the one oh five, the one just below your range. As a potential candidate for it, kind of gives us, it it's not much off from the from the point ninety-five, but at least gets it to that threshold of one. Still leaves a pretty decent overlay as well, plus with what's in the energy fund, we can still, we can still fund that other account quite easily. It doesn't occur too much.
What, the one thing that I always try to emphasize is that we, we look at the tax commitment, this is like one year's, one year and done.
Right, yeah.
But it's not, it is in that regard, but the one thing that you gotta be mindful of is whatever you choose for your overlay is is your cushion for your next year's tax commitment. And and if you hit a snag, um, then, you know, the next year, you can always have that overlay to fall back on, reduce taxes the following year, so, um.
Yeah, and and you're looking at a thirty thousand dollar difference between the point ninety-five and the one oh five. You know, I did think of that as well, and one of the big things last year, everybody wanted us to reduce taxes as much as possible, we all know we can't, we can't do that. And I think that's kind of a, it's less than the bill ground of the chart, it's a little bit below, but I think it's a comfortable number that we still survive with.
You know, Gary, I mean, revenue sharing is coming fairly strong again this year, so so our balance sheet should should look like we can, we can, we can handle, uh, look at the cost, do the costs are coming in higher than most fuel?
Well, I I I want to caution you that, yes, revenue sharing is is up and it's gonna. Well, I, I want to caution you that, yes, revenue sharing is, is up and it's going to go up, the reimbursement rate is going to go up again, and I foresee that revenue sharing will be strong. We, in the last year, we took in 113,000 more than budgeted in revenue share, if these receipts were that high. So, you know, I, I'm thinking this year probably going to happen the same, but costs are going up. And we got to be mindful of that. How, how?
We need to increase some of those line items.
Yeah, but I, but I think that our lines are, are supply costs are going up, and then I think that, you know, one thing that we're going to have a, I mean, I'll, I'll be, I'll be pretty forward with you with, when we look at salaries this year. What other towns are putting out here for, for cost of living alone? Because of CPI, it's around 5%. Consumer pricing is, cola is, is almost 5% this year. And so, and that, that's just cola, that's cost of living. With what's going on with the labor market and our staff, we're, we're going to have some conversations about where we are with with, with our labor and what we're paying our labor. And we'll have to have some discussions and see where that flushes out. I say that, just kind of teeing it up as you're getting ready to do this, that the lower you go down here on that mill rate range, the harder it's going to be next year. To maintain, and so getting in the middle of this, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not 28, 2180, I'm not, that's okay for me too. I'm just saying that.
Yeah, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go any lower than that for sure.
I, I have a hard, you know, that is, that's, my email to you would say, you know, from a taxpayer's perspective, that's taking the, the win. I'm going to take that win right now, and I'm going to provide the biggest mill rate decrease. But I can guarantee you next year you're going to pay for that because we're not going to be able to stay it, and we're going to go back up.
I try to look at a big picture, and I try to think about, you know, I've been fortunate enough to be on the, on the finance community for the past couple of years, so. I've been able to see what we're doing and how that's playing out. And for me, and I look at just this year alone, let's look at some of the bigger projects we've been able to do. Whether it's fire truck, police car, ambulance, cloud truck, all these different things, we've been able to put some money away, like start building a reserve account, those sorts of things. If something happens, COVID isn't like going anywhere, we're clearly back in the mess, but we were not for the past eight months. This year we made it all right. I don't know what next year is going to be. So I think we're, the more we go down that chart, the bigger risk we're going to take on the backside of that. And I've always said that rather than take them in bigger chunks, take smaller bites and bring it down. If you were to pull this chart up next year and we were looking at the same thing, then you could potentially drop another piece down. I find the comfort rate for me to be at the three quarter mill decrease at the 20210, that's where I think it makes the most logical sense to maintain without dropping too far and having a risk that you have to increase or have very no, potentially no change or increase next year. That cloud truck that we agreed upon, we had a price that they could not set in stone. Who knows if that's coming next year? So there's a lot of projects that we know we have. Look what we've done this year, we had to turn around, we have unexpected expenses with pumps for the sewer, sewer plant. All of those things taken into consideration where we went to find that money. It's not like we have tons of money sitting on the side where if you come into a problem, well, we'll just go over there and get it. We're taking up everything you just worked two years to get. So the only way to keep that in line is to be reasonable. Everybody wants a tax reduction, I totally understand that. I would be nothing more happy to drop it down to 2124. But it's not a feasible, it's not a responsible way to do it.
I mean, we can talk about where we are compared to what we're speaking with, with the other towns.
And looking at that, look at the services we offer. You know, we reduced taxes last year, right? You guys have done that.
We went down a little bit, yeah.
You know, and.
I'd rather see a trend than we're down all the time.
A little bit of a time.
Bring it down too much, and the USAD bring it up, that is uproar.
We understand that, but you're on.
Yeah, of course, I mean, that just shows that we're really looking at the whole picture.
I, I think a quarter, at 0.75, it's not an odd, we need the middle to 0.85 or something, you know, a little bit higher up. Just to give a day the tax break, and a lot of these people, especially with COVID, are having a hard time affording things right now. Prices, everything's gone up and it hurt them greatly. If we can give a little bit more of a tax break this year to help out, you know.
That's where I struggle with this year, because if that same thing occurs next year and things don't go down, it's only going to get worse, and we're going to have to write the rest of the tax rate again.
Well, yeah, I, I can understand what you're saying, but we're not going for 2124, we're going for, you know, you know.
Order of a million.
A bit high, yeah.
I will, I will say that long term, speaking long term and about the different ways that you can achieve relief, tax relief, is, you know, mill rate reductions, but the homesteads, those are going to continue to go down because
Correct.
I expect next year that we'll be at 100% or, or less. And based on what happened in the, in the real estate market, we're going to see towns falling to their certified ratio of precipitously, I think. We see it coming, and what that means is that the state reimbursement for homestead exemption, the state statute is 25,000, it's multiplied by certified ratio, so we're actually be able to give them bigger reimbursement right now, so the a reduction to the homesteaders than the state statute of 25,000. But the, the opposite of that is if it falls below 100, it'll be reduced by that. And so, like, if you look, if you look at Frenchville, the 25,000's homestead exemption is, is multiplied by 88%, and that's what they're getting over there. So I think next year's homesteads are going to go down, the veteran exemptions are going to go down. And it's not because of anything that you have any control over, it's just, you know, what's going on in the market. So that will be a negative on us next year as well to achieve some relief there. So you can take more on the front end, or you can save some for the back end, I guess is, is the way to look at it.
I guess for me, I try to, I try to think about the unknown, what if the unknown comes up, and you'll never know, right? We don't know whether they're coming or not. But at the end of the day, I think we're always in a position right now where we may be able to stabilize ourselves a little next year. We have the paving project that's going on that's going to help take that burden off. We're not, we shouldn't see, you know, given anything that we don't know right now, we shouldn't see some major problem with roads. All the sewer, right, all the lines of sewers have been upgraded, correct? We just, we just approved the last bit of that to be done a little behind the end of the KDA. So those bigger projects are behind us, so right now is a chance to solidify where we're at, maintain that, and then work on it again, but I think it's too soon to drop too far off, that's my only. I don't want to, I don't want to do this all the time.
Yeah, and I think we're. I think we're right here, and we're in a position to be able to kind of afford to do a little more this year. You know, there were years that we, we wouldn't even have this choice.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, for sure, my thought was to try to get this overlay as close to 300,000 as possible, and that, that puts us in the, in, at 295, you're looking at, what, a 22? That was, that's what I was saying a little while, all along, you know.
I had to 22, 2210.
Yeah. So it was your 285. Oh, I mean, I'm making a motion that we go with the 285.
Does that second that?
Second by John.
Any discussion on that?
I think a prudent decision, I think it makes a wise choice.
That's why I was guessing you guys are going to.
You're trying to tell us you don't need us?
No, that's not what I said, you're putting words in my mouth.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Against? Motion carries.
So I'm going to, I'm going to go, before you leave, I'm going to go print out the tax. If we get a business, an excessive, material, and then I'll bring you here for this one.
Article seven is to consider sale of tax-acquired properties.
So you have three properties that I put for you. One is the, what is the Birch, Birch lunch thing? And one's tax-acquired. This is basically, you know, if you guys decide you want to move forward, I'll be sending this letter out to date for tomorrow. It basically says you have 30 days to work with us to redeem your property, pay your, pay your taxes, and we'll use the property back to, like we're creating. And if they don't, then, you know, you can move forward, put it out to bid. So I guess, with a thought, as you're thinking about what's structuring the motion, whether the language or not, is number one, are you okay to go ahead and start doing this? And number two, if you put it out to bid, you want to make that part of the same motion, so I don't have to come back to the board and say, all right, so you didn't redeem, now we're going out to bid, what's, what's the bid going to be? What's the minimum bid going to be? Typically, we want to recoup our, you know, the fees and the taxes, that's the goal. And if there's, you know, excess revenue from that, then that's whatever, that's, that's good. So.
You want several motions on each one?
I would say yes.
I'll make a motion, go ahead and proceed with offering the property back for the past four lots, LVR, and if not, going up to bid.
And the bid would be for what is owed?
For what is owed, yeah.
Untaxed in sewer.
There a second, Gary? Second, John, I don't. Any discussion? Hearing none, although you favor the motion? Against? Motion carries. Next property.
So this property is 296 Main Street, that tax map four by 18, tax, tax in sewer acquired. Same situation. There's a balance on those accounts of total balance for taxes in sewer as of November 17, would be $8,614, that would be the minimum bid, if you would sign on the board with that.
You have a motion on that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, Jason?
Exact same as the previous motion except for that, four lobbies.
Would it be a bit of the 10,000, 11,000? Thank you. Any more discussion? Hearing none, although is in favor of the motion? Against? Motion carries.
I, I will say that interest is a cruel dealing on that, that's the, that's the balance as of that bid.
Yes.
I don't know if we'd be too concerned about the interest in crews.
Yeah, I mean, if it's going out, if it's going out to bid and that's the minimum, I'm sure we get.
Right.
Crews on the, on the air.
This, next one is for 267 French Street, tax map six, lot 215. We had done this a year ago, you can see your previous correspondence, I did not receive any reply. This was a homeowner in this instance, and so, you know, I'm always reluctant to, you know, start that process. But there was no reply, and there has not been any attempts to make any improvements on tax or sewers on this account.
Nor any discussion, nothing?
Nothing. They did, they did last year send a return receipt for certified mail. Well, you know they picked it up, there was no response. I'm just looking to, we never followed through on putting out the bid. I think I'd like to just have you guys reaffirm that at this point. And we would do that, and I think what we would do is, we would probably put these three properties out one ahead. But listed separately, bid separately.
So is there a motion?
Yep, I want a motion, I want like the four, map six, lot 215, minimum bid of $6,000.
There's a second, is that one? Any discussion? Hearing none, although is in favor of the motion? Against? Motion carries. Article eight, consider bids received for surplus equipment on the parks and recreation department. You have the bid, Gary?
I have the bid, I have it moving in.
Yep. How many bids are received?
Two. One was received, the first one that I opened on October 14. Lot two, used 2003 John Deere, 60-inch snow blower, the bid is for 550, uh, no, $550.
Just a snow blower?
Yeah. And that one was by Conrad, Conrad Bowyer. Second bid is for Conrad Bowyer on one-use John Deere, 2003 power group, bid is $60.
That was it?
That's it?
There's no other, oh, sorry.
No other bids?
Nope.
There's no department in town that can use that equipment anywhere else.
No, it's.
I'm sure you already checked.
It's equipment specific.
Yeah, it's, it's for that front mouth.
Yeah.
One lower than there.
I don't know why, did you, did you pick it up?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, although is in favor? Against? Motion carries. Do you have? Article nine, consider the adoption of OSHA COVID-compliant vaccine, vaccinated workers workplace with board falls with the higher employees.
All right, so in some of the latest information that I sent you, was that notice that OSHA has put a stay on their menu. Menu, which is essentially for employers of over 100 employees, we fall into that category because it includes all part-time, full-time, it's not full-time or full-time. Each employee, whether full or part-time, counts as one, and that includes volunteer, appointed, elected, fireman. That puts us somewhere around 140, 137 employees that were in place as of November 5, the date of that, when this was supposed to go into effect. So it was the lawsuit in Texas that put a stay on the rule. You know, I was, I took part in a webinar, they said, you know, to go ahead and continue to plan to put it in place, that it was their intention that they were going to be able to have that enforced, OSHA's position was. The county, that was on the webinar that I attended, the HR director from the county attended a webinar put on by Pierce Sathwaite. Giving their legal perspective, it was a PowerPoint presentation. The county barista reached out to the municipalities that over 100, and he just, he wanted to zoom and talk about, share what we learned. And with that, he was able to get through this policy, which is a template from OSHA. You know, made from metal, so we're not funding what was necessary for us. I think that the thought process was that we were going to get these on the, this policy in the books, it has to be on the books by December 4 or 6. And the policy has to be in effect by January 4. And for instance, if you had an employee who was not yet vaccinated, but wanted to get vaccinated, not through the testing, the weekly testing, that there was specific dates. You had to be vaccinated first and then second, depending on which vaccine, if you did the J and J. You were, you know, after 14 days, you're vaccinated, but in order to be vaccinated by, considered fully vaccinated by, January 4. So, long story short, OSHA has kind of stepped down and said, we're not going to put this in place until the appeal goes away, or they prevail, or whatever they do decide to put it in place. So my thought before that was happening was that we would have implemented this on a voluntary basis. And the day that the OSHA rule goes into effect, the day that it goes into effect. And we would obviously have to change the dates. It would, it would push them back, right, those deadline dates. The decision is, basically, OSHA provides the employer the opportunity to choose whether they want a mandate vaccine or do vax or test option, give the employees a choice. The employers that I've talked to in the county, the useful employers that I was in on the Zoom, were Kirabu Priscilla, Holton. Uh, Caribou, Priscilla, Holton in the county barista in Fort Kent. And neither of them were looking to do mandated vaccine, it was gonna be vax or test, weekly test. HR department would have to do a lot of good work, uh, we have to provide educational materials, and there's a lot of stuff that we need to put in place, some of the OSHA stuff you went to pick and see, you know. In the workplace, uh, and then create a roster, uh, of our employees and their status. They're vaccinated fully vaccinated, partially vaccinated, testing weekly. And have a roster that's readily available for OSHA on inspection, and have a roster that doesn't have fees, that's available for the employees. They have a right to see, and in their workplace, are there people that are vaccinated or not vaccinated, if we can't give them fees, and we can give them numbers, I guess. So, we can do two things, I think we can wait and see what OSHA does. Wednesday, if it does come up, um, then we take it up in our next meeting, it gives you guys a little bit more time to process this. Or you could set a voluntary policy in place, and we could start, we could start to work towards that goal. If it does happen, we would be more ready, uh, when it does happen, uh, that some employees would want to provide their vaccine status. We could start putting that information on file. Employees wanted to, I can't imagine you would want to start vaccinating, uh, doing the quick testing yet. But if we do a voluntary, this is contingent on if becoming effective, which was.
I think with, with the lawsuits lingering and that stuff, I don't think we, we want, we put a policy a hundred percent in place, but I do like the idea of preparing ahead of time. And we can put, put a plan together to start collecting the vaccination, start, you know, do the voluntary stuff, like you say. My question is, um, is the testing, is that's the person, the employees dying, not the county?
Right, so those are some of the things that I, are the things that I want to talk to you about as part of it. So, OSHA doesn't say that the employer has to pay, I guess, for the weekly testing. They leave it up to the employer if they want to do that or not. And so, they have said that. The incentive or the disincentive becomes greater if they're the ones that have to pay it.
Not the employer, right.
So, this is sort of a way to kind of move people towards vaccination, I guess.
I agree with that, yeah.
So, the mandate also requires that the unvaccinated employees wear masks at work. Now, we've sort of gone back to masking, we've asked our employees because of the outbreaks that we've had in some of our departments. You know, the disruption that it causes, uh, with masks on. And everybody seems to be pretty much, uh, you know, working, you know, cooperatively on that. But the OSHA vaccine, uh, if the OSHA rule goes into play, into place, into effect, it only requires the unvaccinated to be masked.
Right.
And so, you know, masks by everybody else becomes, either we say as an employee, employer, you're gonna wear your masks, or we're just gonna follow the rule, it puts it on the employees, maybe this is.
Yeah, I mean, my, my honest opinion with that is, if, if you do, vaccinated, have to wear masks, uh, don't wear masks and unvaccinated have to wear them. You're gonna get the dishonest, you can't pick at you, you can't ask, are you, you know, are you vaccinated, part of a mask or not? I would, I would say just across the board, you know, mask, big mask policy. And do, you know, if you're alone in your office, you don't have to wear it, if you're alone in your community, you don't have to wear it, but if you're, you know, within three or six feet of somebody, then, you know.
OSHA's guidance is that if you're in the workplace, you have to mask, if you're in a workplace where you're surrounded by walls and a door, you're alone, you can, you can unmask.
Right, yep.
If you're outside working, you don't need a mask.
Right, yeah.
Are you facing any issues with that, that, from the personnel, or?
No.
Nobody's really pushing back and saying?
No, as far as masking?
Yeah.
No, I haven't heard anything. I mean, you know, we had an outbreak at public works and it was disruptive, you know, and makes people think a little bit. You know, and everybody else who's left working, he's picking up the workload, and then, you know, it causes quite a distress, and that's why we, we, we actively, we want to start masking because,
it doesn't think much of an outbreak in the town, and it's gonna get really sort of rich.
Well, yeah, and they're out for ten days, so it's, it's a big, big concern.
I do want to discuss a little bit with you, it's not necessarily the OSHA guidance, if you will, or the, the mandate, or whatever you want to call it. It's how we've, we've been handling, uh, employees who have been coming into, getting COVID or coming into contact. And so, based on what I've been hearing other communities are doing, uh, we have been basically saying to the employees, if we know that you've been contracted COVID at work, or you've had a close contact at work, we're gonna send you home, we have to, we're gonna pay you, we're gonna charge your EBT time, okay? We're asking you to stay home. But if you get it outside of the workplace, you're using your EBT time. That can be hard to prove, okay?
Yeah.
And so, and, and I'll just give you some, what we had to deal with a little bit. We had a situation where we thought the first one was the first one. And we caught it at work. But then, the next one got it, and it is possible that the next one had it before the first one. So, we had traditionally told the first one, you're using your own EBT, but then that, then causes to rethink whether or not the first one was in fact the first one, and you, you in fact did get it in the workplace.
Yeah.
So, where I'm worried with this is that it's extremely difficult to make that judgment with, with a hundred percent certainty, okay? Uh, I've asked the other towns that were in that meeting, the exception of Caribou. Anybody that gets COVID or has contact, home, camp without charging the employee. Because it's just hard to determine that determination. Where that becomes difficult is where you have the unvaccinated employees, okay? That make a contact. The CDC guidance says you're going home for ten days.
Right.
Where you're vaccinated, you, you can continue to work, and if you show a sentence, you go get your test.
Right.
So, the unvaccinated go home for ten days, paid. And, you know, and it's a matter of opinion, fair, one side or the other, you know, I'm gonna put it out there that way. Causes a lot of, you know, hardship, where it makes people think about what we call the fairness, you know, the fairness factor. Is it fair? Are the employees that have to stay behind, work?
Right.
And the unvaccinated go home, the ending's paid. That's tough.
And I, and I would recommend that with all the CDC guidance, with, let's say, the vaccinated that get to work. Well, if you're unvaccinated and you have to go home because you're unvaccinated, you should not get paid for that. Just my, my thought, you know what I mean? To be fair, because it's not fair that I have to stay, you know, I'm vaccinated, I gotta stay at work, but my daughter's not vaccinated, and she, she gets to go home and, and enjoy, you know what I mean, enjoy the permissions, and, and I'm not saying I'm vaccinated.
He's not a good example.
I am vaccinated.
But I'm just using that as an example, I think to be fair with everybody, all the CDC guidelines of you're vaccinated and you have to stay, or you're vaccinated, go home for five days. Then the unvaccinated will get paid for five days or whatever, whatever.
Well, the, the CDC guidelines is, let's just talk about.
Yeah, I'm just using that, I understand, but.
That, that's sort of our thing. So, to go on the OSHA thing a little bit, let me go backwards.
Yeah.
OSHA says that if the rule goes into effect, number one, we have to provide four hours of time paid for the employee to go get vaccinated.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say that, it just says that they have to have the time paid off, it's used if their own time, that they recruit. It's not that we're paying them separately, they don't use their, that's a decision that we would have to make, okay? It also says that if somebody gets a side effect, they can get two days.
Right, yeah.
Okay, and it also says that we have to guarantee their job, okay? So, but it doesn't talk about who's paying, who's actually paying for that time off. What it's saying is that if the employee, the OSHA rule says, if somebody doesn't have that approved time, the time off that paid the teacher? Or the sick time, whatever you want to call it, that we have to give it to them whether or not they have it, and they can't go into the negative because of it. So.
Yeah, no, I mean, if somebody's making an effort, and again, it's my opinion, if somebody's making an effort to get vaccinated or has made the effort to get vaccinated, then we should support them and, and pay time off and that, but if they're unvaccinated, then we'll pay whatever we would have paid for a vaccinated person, the same amount of time off, but any additional time they need to pay, according to the regulations, should be on their own time. And what I mean by that is, I know this is not what the regulation says, but let's just say the regulation says, a vaccinated person who gets in contact has to go home for two days. And unvaccinated, I know, I'm just using this as an example, okay? And an unvaccinated person has to go home for ten days. Well, that unvaccinated person should get paid for two days like a vaccinated person would, any additional time is not.
That's the common sense.
That's the common sense, that's what I'm saying, we should.
I don't know if we can really apply that.
Whatever, kind of whatever the mandate comes out.
There is too much gray, too much left interpretation, too much opinion, in my opinion, to make any action on any type of policy without further guidance from OSHA, in my personal opinion. I don't, whether you vaccinated, unvaccinated, you may not be vaccinated because you can't be vaccinated. But there's a lot of things out there that play into.
Well, there's the medical exclusions, there are.
Right, there are some medical exclusions, things like that, that maybe, maybe factor in to some of the, I'm not vaccinated, but you're not willing to, you know. So, all that will play itself out when, when they make their decision. As far as the adoption of it, I think there's a, a good ground here, and I would rather stay and let, let's see what the clarification is when it comes out. Um, I would just be afraid that if, if right now somebody voluntarily would do it, they're probably already gonna do it. You know, if you were to say, we'd like to get a, a roster of who's been vaccinated, you can ask people to provide information on their vaccination. Whether they provide it or not is totally up to them, but you can certainly ask.
Well, I think that.
You know, I, I just think I would stay away from trying to, I would, there may be people of a stronger opinion on the other side, just saying, we're gonna put it in place on a voluntary basis. People volunteer, and then all of a sudden it gets washed out, and I don't know.
I, I wouldn't want to collect an employee's medical information without policy in place.
Right.
So, what, what I'm saying is that if, if, I don't know if I feel comfortable asking for an employee's vaccination status or put a memo out that says, hey, any of you that want to provide on a voluntary basis your vaccination status, contact HR.
Right.
We'll keep that on file. I don't have, I don't have a policy in place that deals with medical privacy.
Correct. That's why I don't think we should.
This does, if we are, if we adopted it on a voluntary basis, it would give us that policy. But I also agree with you that a lot of the provisions of the policy don't go into effect until, if it's federally.
Until, until such a date, and it might not at all.
It might not, yeah. I mean, it's completely disproportionate.
And this is a six month, this is six months. This is only a six month thing, unless, I'm sure, we'll extend it temporarily.
I don't want to put a plan in place now, but I'm just saying, like, right now, as far as the, the paying time off and that, what are we doing today? What's the policy today for that?
For me, it would be helpful, because, you know, there's a lot of, there's debates there. What, what are we doing with, again, I'll, I'll go ahead and say that, with the exception of Caribou, all the other large employers, municipal employers, pay it. No questions asked, because they feel that it's too much burden on staff to be able to.
Pay it on that responsibility of.
They get determination where they got it, and the only time that you can be a hundred percent sure is within, is ironically, in the unvaccinated where they make the contact. And by CDC's policy, you got to go home for ten days. You know, but everywhere else, if we have to sit there and make an determination, you got it at work and you didn't get it at work.
No, that part I understand, but I'm talking about, like you just said, that one of the other towns, those people who have to go home for ten days, are they paying? Regardless of that.
They're paying.
As far as I know, most places.
Except Caribou. I understand.
They say it in the last half hour, or?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I was there. And a lot of them had concerns also about what happens if you're sent home to be quarantined, you're not really quarantined, you know? And nobody had an answer on that, but it, it came up, you know?
Water grade evidence.
Yeah, that's where the, you know.
And who's gonna report you?
Well, that's, and that's where it gets dicey.
I know.
You get employees that are supposed to stay home and quarantine, but they don't. And, and that's where it becomes.
And we're paying them, that's the thing, we're paying them to stay home and they're going out.
Yeah, I know.
That's why I, I think.
Cause that came up, but there was no answer that was given.
That's why I think we shouldn't be paying people to stay home, because they made the choice to get unvaccinated. And that's, that's, apart from this policy, that's what I'm, I'm looking at. And that was, you're saying that would follow what Caribou's doing, they don't pay for.
I think, I think that they're not paying for, they're, they're charging the employees sick time for, for quarter time off.
Very bad, good stuff.
Generally speaking, not vaccinated or not, it's just COVID contact, whatever, you use your, you use your earned time. Your benefit time, your sick time, whatever it is, whatever they have in place. But the other towns pay it.
Majority was paid.
Yeah.
Decisions are making.
I, come out with a policy, or?
I, I.
Policy, or? I think not, but I think we should address the, the paid time off, and I would make a motion, I'd be ready to make a motion on just that, the paid time off, not the policy.
I think that that would alleviate or help you, because I know that this is an issue for you at this point, that, you know, it'd give you some kind of guidance and.
Well, these are employment practices, and it almost needs to be a policy, and it's not something I prefer to have discretion over.
There's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of, yeah. I'll, can we make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion right now, there's no second.
So I'm prepared to make a motion that, according to the paid sick time off, that would follow the, the same policy that Caribou's following now.
That's moving starting today.
That would be starting on today.
Moving forward.
Moving forward, yeah, yeah, I would retract it, today's starting forward, that, that you have the employees take their, their time, not their sick leave.
There's no, there's no second, yes. Did you ask for a second? The motion is.
Yep.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yep, I'll second the motion.
You'll second the motion?
Yeah, okay.
Discussion.
How are you gonna ask somebody if they're vaccinated or not?
We're not, we're not, anybody.
But in Caribou, if you're unvaccinated, you're not paid, is that correct?
No, 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 no. We, 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 I see what you're saying, how do we know? We know because some of the employees have told us they're not, you know, they don't plan to be, so it's verbal confirmation. Some employees, we all work in our workplace and, you know, I, I tell her that I'm vaccinated, she tells, we all know when we went to get vaccinated. Some of the employees have said, we're, we're not vaccinated and we don't want to get vaccinated. So, it's not, there's not a quick documentation?
Yeah.
I see what you're, I see what you're going.
This motion was regardless of vaccination, this was, like, well, when I, I asked that question, and then you said regardless of vaccination or not, they're, they're taking their sick leave if they have to go home.
What, what, so what I'm saying is, what, what are we doing in respect to, that's, like, sending people home?
Right, and that's what I answered, regardless of vaccination status.
You're, you're saying they're gonna use their own time if, if.
They go home, yeah, they use their own time. Because according to what we just talked about earlier, the CDC doesn't recommend sending somebody who has been vaccinated home, they will, they can use their at work. So they're not gonna be going home.
If that's possible, they have to go home.
Correct.
And then, they, and then they, they have to use their earned time.
And, and again, we ask the employees if they're vaccinated or not, and that's, that's how we.
Voluntary, at that point.
You know, we don't carry the record.
We don't have a policy to ask them.
But we're not asking vaccination. Well, I'm saying, this has nothing to do with asking, asking for vaccination. If you have COVID or you, and you have to go home, period, regardless of vaccination.
You are gonna use your own personal time.
So you're treating this like any other illness.
Yeah.
This is any other.
If you go home, you're taking your personal time.
It's all for COVID. I didn't say any other illness.
Well, no, but basically, we're handling it the same way.
Yeah, yeah.
You're sick enough that you can't be at work, you're going home, your sick time.
They're sent home, yeah.
A person runs out of sick time. That's it, that's it.
Why don't we offer employees who need to go home due to COVID, have the option to use their personal time or unpaid? If you have personal time, you can use your personal time.
Yeah, I would not have any.
If you don't have personal time?
Then it falls under the same policy that, you know. Personal, I don't want to.
Well, it's all the same, but what you're saying is that, the difference is that it would be, if you don't have any more left, you're just going home and paid.
Right.
Which they don't, yeah.
But what I'm saying is, if you tell them, they might. But what I'm saying is, if you tell them they must take it, what if I have a wedding in April? And I have a vacation booked and I need that time for that, so what time am I have?
Yeah, yeah.
And then if I get sick between now and then, I go home and I have to use my earned time at that point, now I don't have any time to take for the wedding night at work.
Right.
So, to me, I think they should have the option to take it unpaid if they want, not force them to use their, their personal time.
So, that's what I'm saying. I'd, I'd amend my motion then to include or time off.
Yes, to agree to.
I'd rescind it.
Second, have to rescind the second. Yeah. Rescind your second.
So, to be clear.
So, a notice. A significant departure from where we were.
Yeah, I know.
Right, so I'll, I'll make it clear again, so, rescinding your second, I'll make my motion clear again. So, if an employee is sent home for COVID, for being infected with COVID, either for COVID or infected with COVID or under the understanding that they might have COVID, any reason that they're sent home due to any COVID related illness, they can choose either take their personal time or unpaid time off. So, that's somebody waiting for a test, somebody who's positive, somebody, if the CDC recommends them to go home, they can choose whether it's unpaid or personal time. I'll second that.
What do you guys, what do you guys do with the mail?
Everybody's paid.
Everybody's paid right now.
You for the testing. The other thing is, anyone who's an employee, guys, they wanna. If someone says, hey, I got lose time, I'm looking for another job. Except the nature with it.
They have earned time, they can choose to take it or they can take it out.
In fact, we have.
That's the motion.
We have, uh, now, I mean, sick days that we don't have to take.
But after a couple of policies.
And there's a policy on it still.
Is there an expiration to this motion, to this policy?
I, I would, I would have it reviewed at the time that we create any other policy regarding this though.
I mean. Review what are any changes.
I would say canceled at the time, just saying.
Oh, the guidance, different guidance.
Is that in the motion? We got it?
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of the motion?
No, but there will be.
I just, I, something that just came up and that you guys were discussing that, um, topic. Do you, do you think that that might make, force people to maybe be untruthful about their COVID positive result? If they have to, which may lead to an outbreak later on in the future?
Sure.
I'm just saying that, that's something that popped into my head.
Yeah. And it could work the other way too, if somebody could be untruthful about that, I think I'm infected with COVID, I'm going home.
Well, certainly if the unvaccinated were sent home paid, that could be a reason to say, well, I was in contact, you know, a pre-vacation type thing, but. Then, yeah, that was just a.
Alright, so we're gonna treat it as anything, anything that's filed as of tomorrow.
Right.
Moving forward.
Probably gonna create more issues than, than you had before.
Yeah. Might have to revisit next week, next week.
Yeah, I might call the meeting sort of. Okay, we'll be the article ten, we'll call it a work in progress.
Discussion regarding vandalism on our parks facilities.
So, I got an email, you know, for, you know, we saw it on Facebook, on Facebook, but other side and people were responding to that. And we know I've reached out to the guys and to say that, you know, we need to have a discussion about vandalism and I agree. Vandalism, we have been experiencing vandalism in our parks intermittently since I've been here. Uh, and I'm sure it was going on before that, and it competed, repeating, uh, later on equipment several years ago to breaking things, kicking things, whatever. Sam can talk about more specifically what those are, but we, here, the old lady.
Those are two basically that we're having trouble.
Primarily.
Yeah, I'd say so, yeah, at least this summer anyway.
One of them is the location, private, it's hard to see, and the other one is what, lighting?
I think regards of lighting.
Yeah.
I've even seen some on the Fox Street Park as well. Purchased a brand new picnic table and the next day there's gray things all over it now. And that's right out in the middle of the street, on the light. It's one of those things, it's hard to snap your fingers and get rid of overnight.
So, I, I shared my, in my email to you guys about it, that, kind of dealt with that incident a little bit and we're gonna open it for you. If the level of camera quality, video quality for law enforcement purposes, first to have uh, video that is usable in prosecution has to be very high. If, if, if you can't, your cameras are up there, you gotta zoom them in, when you do that, it becomes historic.
Picture.
You need high end cameras, you need cameras that can read well at night, you have issues with lighting. The light, street lighting's here, you can't put the camera there, it causes halos around the images, you know, people and stuff. You can't see lighting plate numbers when you, so that, you really need a high end system, from what I was told back over there. And, um, I had something that was actually useful from a law enforcement perspective, right? So, you can have the camera that says, I know that it's you, but I can't, I'm not hundred percent sure. It can be a, it can, it can be a deterrent though, having it up there might be a deterrent to not, um, but it might not. And what I can tell you is that law enforcement, I, I learned over there incidentally that they were very frustrated with the judicial system right now, because they don't have the person they caught right handed. They're sending them home, and that is exacerbated today by COVID because prisons aren't taking any of them anymore, well, during these outbreaks. So, we could put in some surveillance, it's gonna require wifi, pushing signal, high end equipment, uh, maintenance, maybe not a lot of extent there, and I would imagine investment, will, will it help? I would think they would have some miserable effect, is it gonna be foolproof? I don't know, uh, but it's gonna cost them money. And then the other side of it is the cost on the record department, having to go behind and clean up all this stuff because, you know, most often they're the, they don't find out first, they find out through Facebook and you have a, 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 a community that's in outreach and it needs to be fixed now, and so they gotta drop everything they're doing to go fix it. And it places a, a pretty good demand on it, I don't wanna take all of what you wanna say, but you can speak to, you know, to it if you wanna chime in.
I was quick to go. Well, no, it's just that, I mean, I've only been on as director for a couple of years now, but this, it was a pretty bad summer as far as vandalism goes. Uh, beginning of the summer, I mean, that bathroom at the Bison Tunder Park was vandalized repeatedly. Uh, door was kicked in in the men's bathroom and had, uh, soap dispensers torn off the wall and, and the toilet was, uh, disgusting. I mean, you know, pooping on top of that and flushing the toilet and graffiti on the wall. So, my guys had to, you know, repeatedly go and clean that up. Uh, not only is it gross and time consuming, but also plays a financial burden, you know, relatively small, but still, you know, repeatedly over the course of the summer, it's several hundred dollars for sure worth of wood and soap dispensers and that type of stuff. So, uh, you know, I just certainly need the conversation to be had, I guess, in terms of what to do about it. If there's anything we can do about it, I know, you know, cameras, Gary alluded to it, camera systems can be expensive, but, uh, maybe a camera that isn't necessarily recording or, uh, just something to create the, you know, the thought of, hey, there is a camera watching you, even though the kids might not know that it's recording or not. Uh, that might deter them, but, you know, we talked about it earlier today, it might only last for a little, little while. Um, and maybe these things ebb and flow as well, you know, the summer was particularly bad, maybe because COVID, maybe the kids don't have much to do. Not sure what the culprit is, but maybe next summer would be better, you know, I, I'm not sure, but I just know that if it continues every summer like this and it's hard for us to make progress in the parks, uh, you know, like putting your picnic tables in, uh, fixing things that need to be fixed to try and beautify these parks and, uh, it kind of feels like we're taking steps backwards. Uh, if, especially like there was one that just happened a couple of weeks ago and right before winter, you know, and so it's, uh, you know, can't really do much sending to it right now, but, um, yeah, so it just, it's a little frustrating on, on the part of the park superintendent department as far as that goes, so just, I wanna see if there's anything that can be done.
I think that aside from prosecutable evidence, video, report, PD, if there were camera systems, if PD would have access to them, they could, I'm sure they could monitor that, and if there's activity going on at 1:00 AM in the parks, you know, by being able to just see the video, if they happen to look at it at the right time, they can go there and.
And what's the likelihood that occurs if somebody happens to be looking at the camera when it, when it goes down? Vandalism is always gonna be a problem, right? You know, we can't put a camera on a bathroom, right? So, what do you do? You know, do you plead with the community and say, hey, if, uh, we're gonna start having the PD enforce, you know, the strictest prosecution we can on anything that's found? And, you know, do we put a reward out there? Versus buying cameras, do you put a reward?
A whistleblower turn in.
Video or pictures of the person doing the vandalizing and here's extra reward, um, you know, and beg the, you know, we're gonna have to ask the community, this is our community.
It's a community police.
This, this is a community policing effort, our PD is not gonna be able to handle this, this is not something you put on the back of the PD. There's no way they're gonna be able to manage this, it's awful that you even have to discuss it, but at the end of the day, you know, our community members are the ones that are doing it more than likely, right? Or they're with somebody from this community that's doing it, or they're friends from another community here, I don't know. But I would suspect that, you know, a higher level awareness, you know, maybe a, an ad, a, a, an ad in the paper, you know, something on our app, um, talk with the PD, you know, maybe, uh, offer a reward for turning in. Those people that are doing those sorts of things versus trying to invest thousands of dollars in a camera system that you hope somebody's there and then even if you do get it, hopefully it's clear enough or.
They steal the camera.
You know, I, which is a deterrent, just like it would be a camera, you know what I mean? It's, it's, I just think.
We have.
I don't know how we're gonna stop it, I mean, it's happened, it's not just here.
No. We have, we have set up a, like game cam, so the police department does, and the rec, we do have a game cam as well and for, uh, like the pocket park next to Diego's Furniture, there was a, a dog that was pooping on the, you know, in the park and so it was a, the problem. We get them to, you know, go, go clean it up, so, uh, a recurring offense like that, I mean, I guess, uh, game cam, it does work, you know, if like vandalism in the park is repeated, uh, the thing is it's kind of sporadic, so it's kind of hard to say, well, it happens one day, but the game cam, nothing happens. And we're asking either maintenance guys or the police department to kind of, uh, filter through hundreds and hundreds of pictures, you know? Uh, so that could be difficult as well, but it did help in that case, so that's one thing that if there's like a repeated thing that, okay, this is happening every week. Uh, that's something we can certainly do, uh, so, yeah.
I think that could be a, a, a short term fix, you know, that they're gonna see a camera there, it'll realize.
Well, they, they won't, they won't see the game cam though, kind of.
So, you're gonna put it in the position that they're not gonna see?
Right.
Cause they, cause you don't want it to be vandalized.
Right.
They could just take the game cam with them.
So, put it, that's, put it, put it in the location that they can't reach it.
Yeah.
You know, I'd like them to see it, if we're gonna even attempt this, then they'll lose their camera there.
I, I, I think we should do a, a rotation, I know there's gonna be some work on the rec department, do a rotation schedule for a short period of time between the parks where one day you put the camera somewhere it's perfectly visible, the next day, put it in a different park, hit it, the next day in another park, totally visible. And, and let people know, advertise it on the app and advertise, hey, we're watching our parks, we got cameras in the park.
And then not to check it, but like if we see, if we notice vandalism, they go back and, you know, if it just so happens that we get lucky that it's at that park.
Right, yeah, you would have to check it every day, you know, when you see that there's vandalism, go check that area.
Yep.
Because, yeah, like Chris said, try to get the police department to monitor there, and if you have one park, the kid's gonna go to the other. If the cops come and monitor, I wouldn't want to put that burden on them. Uh, the other thing too we can do is, uh, let somebody's festivities and festivals know that, cause a lot of this vandalism happens right there in the middle of the day during music in the park or during a cage festival or during these activities. Uh, I've been there plenty of times during music in the park, I get some kids stop, you know, stop tearing apart the, the table or get off the swing, you know, they're on the, the small kiddie swing, uh, two at a time, breaking it, you know? To ha- ask these festivities to say, hey, you know, have somebody walk around and just check what's going on in the park. There's a lot of damage that right there in mid daylight when the parks are full, you know, like I've seen it firsthand. So, I think if we take a mixed approach like that, involve the community and just get the word out there.
Yeah, also play on the community as well, I know a lot of, like, um, there's a lot of dog walkers that go through the park, especially by Tendino Park, right?
That's where a lot of those reports are coming from.
That, that one a couple of weeks ago was, yeah, exactly, so, you know, hey, you gotta, you know, lean on the community a little bit, say, hey, you know, if you see something that's not supposed to happen, then report it or whatever, but, uh, watering flowers this summer, so, you know, a bunch of kids, like four or five kids on that metal swing, you know, swinging back and forth, trying to go as fast as they possibly can on it, as high as they can. And, you know, it's like, guys, you know, get off the swing, you're gonna break it, you know? But for them, it's, I don't know if they have nothing else to do, if they, you know, they think that breaking stuff, they're trying to break stuff is fun, but, uh, that's, that was the case, they're having a great time, but you don't realize that there's consequences and people that have to fix it and it costs money to fix these things and, so.
There's been an internet trend lately too, take, take videos of yourself breaking.
Yeah, big dogs, yeah.
And that's.
It's gotta come. What do you do, neighborhood watch program or something?
Yeah, I mean.
It's so hard.
I know, it is hard.
You know, and I love nothing more to have the time to go down and drive through the parks at nine o'clock at night just to make sure everything's good. If I catch somebody, I'd, I'd love to bring them back home to mom and dad, or maybe mom and dad are even there.
Well, that's, I think that's part of the issue too, maybe sometimes.
It's an issue with anything.
We've thought about.
Sam, any recommendations?
Well, I just, uh, I reckon, you know, uh, paid camera, I guess that would be a cheap option to say, hey, there's a camera there, whether it's reporting or not. Might solve something, maybe not, but then who, you know, who knows? Um, we, Gerald and I and Al have, we've considered at the beginning of the summer when all the vandalism was at, was at its peak, to, to lock the bathrooms, you know? At certain times, we only open it for these occasions like music in the park, but then it's sad to have to even think about that because it's a public park and a public restroom where as long as it's being used responsibly, they should be able to use it at any time. Uh, so, you know, we didn't do anything, we didn't act on that, but, um, so as far as recommendations, I'm not sure besides, uh, besides that, you know, paid camera and then, you know, I think the game cam thing, putting it in different locations, you know, like it, that, that could be.
That could be handled, or you could do that.
Yeah, I mean, just every morning, make it a habit, you know, in the morning, hey, you know, just remove the camera and then, you know, take a visual, quick look at the park to see if anything was vandalized and then also lean on the community too, the dog walkers are great because they're, those are the ones that are frequenting, frequenting the park most, you know, they're.
See something, say something.
They're there every single day, yeah, yeah. And this thing might.
Go away.
Might ebb and flow, you know, hey, next year, a group of kids, uh, found something else to do or, you know, I don't know, but. Uh, it was just particularly bad this summer, so I, you know, I'm glad the conversation, I'm glad it's brought to your attention, I'm sure you guys have heard, but, uh, we can try these different tactics and, uh, I don't know, maybe, geez, I don't know, what do you, what do you think?
Do you guys have game cameras now?
We do right now, yeah.
How many do you have?
Uh, I believe there's two, there's two.
Would it benefit having a couple more game cameras, I mean, they're not that expensive.
It, yeah, it, it might actually, yeah, it's, um, it might not be a bad idea to, to put a couple in, in, you know, each part or at least one in each. And then if you notice.
Are we wanting to swap the card out?
Yeah, that's the. I think the expense is, is, yeah, as the, the SD, SD card fills up, you have to purchase new ones, but.
Yeah, they're pretty cheap.
Yeah.
We can find out what it is, I, I know we get some real.
Have money in your budget again, a couple game cameras and memory cards or something?
I, I would think so, yeah, um, I, I, you know, until, yeah, for sure, uh, until it becomes a, you know, we have to.
And I don't think you need a policy from us on where and when.
No, I think, I think you would kind of see where it's happening and trending and, you know, hopefully we can catch something, but, you know, in the meantime, we.
You have more information and you can bring it back to us, what your findings are and what you could recommend.
You know, hopefully we can catch something, but, you know, in the meantime, we get more information, and you can bring it back to us, what your findings are, and what you could recommend.
Yeah, every time we have a vandalism, we report it to the police.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Documented, so at least if we come back to this, then it's, everything's documented, this, what happened this summer, so uh, you have something to look back on.
They're clever, I mean
Yeah, no.
Catching the act is gonna be really difficult.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, it's just frustrating.
Yeah, I'm more of a deterrent than anything, but I, you know, I think community policing is gonna be our best option.
I think so.
It's awful to say that, but I, we'll all see to you, you know? We can't put a full-time officer on to police parks.
Yeah, it's, it's tough when the vandalism, vandalism has already happened.
Yeah.
You know, uh, it's causing a little bit more stress on our parks and restrooms' budget, but, uh, because wood, obviously, wood this summer was crazy expensive, so uh, we do have to repair some, some wood objects there, but, um, hasn't missed you bad where we're, you know, not thousands of dollars at this point, but a couple hundreds of dollars for sure has racked up, so.
Article 11 Zoom training. This is for executives, elected and appointed officials. Anybody interested? Let me know, I'll sign you up.
I would be interested on December 8.
December 8?
Yeah, 4 to 6, I can do that one, my day off. The rest I get, they were both my days.
Anybody else interested? I can do the same one.
Well, yeah, do me that one. I'm gonna put that on my phone.
I think, I think something on it?
Yeah.
I think, you know, this, this is a very, very important training. I don't know if any of you have ever visited the EOC here in Madawaska, if you haven't, give me a call, I'll take, I'll gladly take you over there. It's a pretty, it's a very good setup, it's something that we don't use often enough in this town. And I think when it has been used, the town officials really haven't been involved to the fullest potential. So it'd be nice to see us all get the training and all participate in the next event that the EOC has. It's one of those things, the EOC, uh, it's an emergency operations center, basically when natural disasters happen, floods, large fires, you know, earthquakes, things like that. Uh, this is the central area where everything is happening. So our involvement is a lot more of, hey, we need to rent 30 generators, and we, you know, this is getting hit with the town budget. It's nice to have officials there to, you know, work through this and discuss this, especially having Gary there for his knowledge of the town. It's nice to see it in operation, we've got a couple tests, and we practice a lot, and it's a pretty neat facility. So then we just say that I'll set you all up for a week. If you get a chance to participate, all these things for you, they in a sense?
Gary stepped out when we were discussing vandalism. He was asked, maybe we could get a couple more game cameras to try to do that in regards. It's not gonna be an easy one. It's a bad one.
I wonder, I wonder, also putting the signs in our parks, that our parks are under surveillance?
Yeah, that could be a good idea.
I think people ought to know that
It would hurt.
If people wonder that the cause harm should know that while you're there
It could be filmed.
They're being surveyed, they should know that. So we'll look to get some signs as well.
Yep.
Sounds true.
Before we adjourn, we
We're not a date, Karen? Mark?
We already got two meetings in December, so Oh, yeah, I've already set up. Ethan, uh I did, not you guys.
Yeah, I mean, not Do we do work before Christmas, sir?
No, I don't know, 14, 15, 19, 13, 14. I was looking at the 30th, we need eight. Of this one?
Yeah. So 30 or, you know, sooner.
In two weeks, I don't know where else you have.
No, uh, the upcoming 30, Tuesday, November.
November 30.
November 30.
It'll be two weeks from now, today.
Okay, we need, uh, for meeting this month?
I would say no, I don't think so on Carol. Is there anything pressing this month? I would say probably, I'm good till December for sure.
Or 14?
I will ask you a question, there'll be a mining board meeting that night.
So 14?
14 would work for me.
It's probably gonna be a probably thing, unless I'm not comfortable with that.
14, 15?
5:30?
5:30. 30?
Yep. Okay.
Motion for adjourn?
Get your pen ready.
Yeah, motion adjourned, second by
Yeah.
David? Gary? Just wanna let you know, I'm still working on the bylaws. Hoping that maybe in December, if I'm not dead.
Yeah, you know, and I, you know, Chris and I, we can get back on personal policy.
Yep.